He's on granddad duty.
I was gonna say, is he?
We got a call yesterday afternoon that the son was sick. They needed help. I said, well, I can't come, so granddad gets to go.
Sit here and listen to the music.
I know. It's swearing in this afternoon and I said, too bad the lights weren't on.
City Council now being session, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Evancho.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Loffman.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Mauer.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Zaleski.
Here.
Reading of the minutes, Mr. Wolverton.
I make a motion, we need dispensary minutes, place on file.
Mr. Mauer.
Second motion.
All in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
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 Both same sign, and that motion's granted. Mayor's report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Here we are with the lights blown into one corner. Got Thanksgiving this week, and then bang, all of a sudden, we're off the races to Christmas. It's hard to believe. So I got a few things in front of you here. We've got all kinds of trying to wrap up different things in the next thirty days, get ready for the next year. Number one, request from the park to transfer seventeen thousand one hundred from maintenance to be placed in the following accounts. Fifteen thousand to salaries and twenty-one hundred to P E R S. Two, request for authorization to enter into contract with F O P Lodge Ten. Three, request to adopt the two thousand twenty-five annual budget. Which is really incredible when you think about it.
Yeah.
There's been a couple of things I feel real good about, but I'm not saying much, because it don't take long to go sideways. But, uh, I'll keep moving. Number four, request for men's gender to enter into contract for inspection services for safer routes to school project. That'll be a different one than the one we've been talking about for two or three years, so we're gonna keep that going if we can. Five, request from Economic Community Development to accept twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-nine from the Guernsey County Land Reutilization Corporation and appropriate it into the action grant account.
Okay, all those requests will be referred to the Finance Committee.
That'd be great, Council President. I do have a few things in no direct order. Leaf pickup's going strong, working out real good. Both big back trucks are back at full go. And they're doing as best they can. Weather's been a little kooky, but not bad. I just wanna wish the high state Buckeyes a big skidder done this weekend.
Aye.
I think we're, I think we're thinking about that pretty steady already. Uh, I know a lot of times we've been bringing the officers in here to swear them in, have more of a ceremony. We did throw one together really quick today, and we swore in David Ryan back to us, who had been with us, been away and came back. And we wanted to get him on shift as quick as we could, so I just, we sped that one up a little bit, but I wanna tell you, we did that. Your clerk was there, so I'm sure she can send you some kind of information on it if you need it. I want everyone to have a safe holiday coming into this Thanksgiving, because we all have a lot to be thankful for. The year is just going so fast toward the end, and, uh, things are changing pretty quick, but I just wanna make sure I mentioned that. And we have a new coach for the Cambridge Bobcats in basketball, so I'm hopeful we'll see some different activity out that way. So, that season is underway, boys and girls. Just thought I'd throw that in there. Wish them the best of luck. And downtown has been strong already, and of course, we can see out tonight, the LED lights and stuff going on, it's pretty neat. Lot of things bustling on downtown, the vendors and stuff, so. And the Christmas parade will kick off after the high state game. You don't have time to grab your little ones, or the grandkids, or your own kids, and head on out. It'll be Action City, so that's all I have right now, Council President.
Any questions for the mayor tonight? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to communications.
I have a notice for the zoning and planning commission. They will meet here in council chambers on Wednesday, December the eleventh, at four o'clock. They have two items that they'll be addressing, one from James Ankrum. Uh, the property address is eighteen fifteen South Gate Parkway. The request is for a variance to reduce the front setback from fifty to two point three. And the second request is from Eric Burlingame at fifteen forty-four Hill Crest Acres. Uh, he is asking for a variance to reduce setbacks from thirty foot to one foot accessory structure between principal and public right-of-way. Wednesday, December the eleventh, at four o'clock.
Is that it?
I have the, uh, park board minutes from October the tenth.
Mr. Loffman.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second to motion.
All in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion's granted. Next, please.
I have a request from the law director for transfer of funds within his budget.
Mr. Evancho.
A motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Mr. Wolverton.
Second to motion.
All in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion's granted. Next, please.
I have a request from the code enforcement officer to appropriate two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars to fire insurance.
Mr. McMillan.
Motion to refer to Finance.
So.
Second to motion.
All in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion's granted. Next.
I have a request from the city auditor. This is his, um, first list of, uh, end of the year transfers and appropriations that need to be approved.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Mr. Zaleski.
Second to.
All in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion's granted. Next, please.
I have a letter from our councilwoman, Donna Hill. Um, dear friends, goodness. I said I wasn't gonna do this. Here we go. With regrets, I will be resigning from my role as city council at large effective Tuesday, November the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with the current and previous councilmen and councilwoman, city administration, and representing the residents of Cambridge in this capacity. I have learned so much and have formed friendships with many outstanding colleagues that I will always treasure. Though I am excited to be moving to Kansas and living close to our children and grandchildren, it is bittersweet. I will miss you all more than you can imagine. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to our city at keeping it progressive and keeping it Cambridge. There's no place like home. Darn you.
I know.
Please, a motion to accept.
Uh, yes, just to accept it and place on file, and as I had explained a couple of weeks ago, because we, here in Cambridge, we do have partisan elections. It will be up to the Republican Central Committee to appoint Donna's replacement. And Donna has ma- made sure that the chairman of the party has the letter, and they are working on making the announcement he will be replaced. But you do need to officially accept it.
What if we don't?
She has to go home and unpack the U-Haul.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Zaleski.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Mauer.
Second to motion.
All in favor of the motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and that motion's granted.
And the last we have are the, um, uh, monthly reports from the auditor, treasurer, and municipal court.
Mr. Loffman.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Mr. McMillan.
Second to motion.
All in favor of the motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion's granted. That's it.
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to reports committees.
Report of Finance Committee, um, November the twenty-first. We recommend that the following transfers and appropriations be approved. Transfer forty-five thousand dollars from water operation and maintenance consulting to water administration salaries. Transfer ten thousand dollars from water operation and maintenance consulting to water administration P E R S. Transfer one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from water operations and maintenance consulting to water operation and maintenance salaries. Transfer forty thousand dollars from water operation and maintenance consulting to water operation and maintenance P E R S. Transfer ten thousand dollars from sewer operations and maintenance salaries to sewer administration salaries. Transfer three thousand five hundred dollars from sewer operation and maintenance salaries to sewer administration P E R S. Transfer twenty-eight thousand dollars from sewer operation and maintenance salaries to sewer operation and maintenance capital improvements. Appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to general fund miscellaneous insurance. Appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fire salaries. Transfer twelve thousand dollars from EMS salary to EMS miscellaneous.
Any questions to the committee on that report? Next, please.
Report of Finance Committee, we recommend that council authorizes the mayor to enter into contract with the city band for the two thousand twenty-five season.
Any questions to the committee on that report? Next, please.
Report of Finance Committee, we recommend that council authorizes the administration to submit a safety funding request to the Ohio Department of Transportation. Said funding is to be used for the Great Guernsey Trailhead Project.
Any questions to the committee on that report? Next, please.
Report of Finance Committee, we recommend that council authorizes the administration to submit a transportation alternatives program application.
Any questions to the committee on that report? Next, please.
Report of Finance Committee, we recommend that council hereby approves the allocation of bed tax funds as follows. Fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty cents for the city's share of the purchase of a tractor.
Okay, any questions to the committee on that report? Very good. Okay, we'll move to unfinished business. Is there anything under unfinished business? Seeing nothing, we'll go to the audience portion. If anybody in the audience wishes to speak before council, they can do that now. Not yet. Not yet. Okay, go to new business. Uh, is there anything under new business? Mr. Mauer.
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion for the Legislative Committee to meet, um, to open discussions about the overpopulation of feral animals in the city. Um, I asked our clerk to get some info from other, uh, clerks as to what they've been able to do to combat that issue. Um, and I have, I have that here. I have a copy for everybody. Um, a lot of the residents have shared photos with me about just the amount of colonies there are of, of, of different animals, mostly cats. Um, and I do have a local cat shelter that's willing to come and speak to council, um, in regards to the issues and problems that this has caused. So, um, like I said, I just wanna open up the discussion to see what, if anything, we can do.
Is there a second? Mr. Loffman.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of the motion, see if the Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and, uh, will that be Legislative Committee next, uh, next Monday? Okay, anything else? Uh, we'll go to ordinances and resolutions.
An ordinance of transfers and appropriations, second reading.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. McMillan.
Second to motion.
Yeah, all in favor of that motion, see if the Papa's, roll call, please, my bad.
How long you been doing this?
Twenty, twenty-four years.
McMillan, yeah, Zaleski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
And Mr. Loffman.
Motion to pass.
Ms. Hill.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? At that part, right? Okay, roll call, please.
Mauer.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
And that is declared an ordinance. Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to enter into contract with Stryker for equipment purchases, second reading.
Mr. Mauer.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Zaleski.
I'll second that.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Wolverton.
Second to pass.
I called it, because you had your end up earlier. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance amending chapter ninety-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Ohio, and this is the cemetery regulations.
Ms. McMillan.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Wolverton.
Second to motion.
Uh, roll call on the suspension, please.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Mauer.
Second to motion.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
Loffman.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Once I get through this, let's find a back page, we'll go to the next deck, please.
An ordinance regulating adult-use cannabis dispensaries in the city of Cambridge, Ohio, second reading.
Okay, um, seeing no motion, we'll, uh, put this on for the third reading at the next meeting. Next, please.
An ordinances, an ordinance of transfers and appropriations.
Ms. McMillan.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Loffman.
Second to motion.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Mauer.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Zaleski.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cambridge City Band.
Mr. Wolverton.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Evancho.
I'll second the motion to suspend.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Mauer.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hill.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Loffman.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Zaleski.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to submit safety funding requests to Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Zaleski.
I'll second to suspend.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton.
First to pass.
Mr. McMillan.
Second to pass.
Roll call, uh, excuse me, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. You tell it to anybody here. Anybody? Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to submit a transportation alternatives program application and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Loffman.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Mauer.
Second to motion.
Roll call on the suspension.
Evancho.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Evancho.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Zaleski.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
That ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance approving allocation of bed tax funds for capital improvement purchase at the airport.
Mr. Loffman.
Motion to suspend.
Ms. Hill.
Second to suspend.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Loffman.
Yes.
Ms. Hill.
Motion to pass.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Loffman.
Yes.
Evancho.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Zaleski.
Yes.
Mauer.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous.
After, after he, I'm sorry.
Um, we're moving on to miscellaneous.
And, uh, Finance will meet, uh, next Monday, December second, at four thirty.
And Legislative?
Uh, Legislative will meet at four forty-five or immediately following Finance.
Okay.
Can I real quick say something?
Sure.
I just want to let everybody know, December seventh, at nine AM, the park is having breakfast with Santa um, at the Armory, and after that, the Board of D D will have the, uh, candy canut in the park. So bring the kiddos out and have breakfast.
Okay. Mitch?
Could I say something, too, real quick? Please.
You wanna wait?
No. No, I don't wanna wait.
Okay.
I wanna get this out there. I know we went for the second reading this evening on the, uh, cannabis ordinance, and, uh, as most of you know, I am adamantly opposed to that, and I'm not going to get to be here for the third reading, third final reading, or however long it ends up going. But I just would like to get on the record that I am opposed to it, and, um, that's it. I just want my no out there. Thank you.
You bet. Uh, Mitch, you wanna come up to the microphone?
Take your time, Mitch. Take your time, wait on the clerk.
As soon as this is appropriate. Ms. Hill, front and center, please. And as, well, civilians would say, please, so front and center, please.
There. Yes.
Here.
Yes.
All right. Well, on behalf.
Make sure you're at the mic, so it'll record.
Pardon me, I'm muted this game. On behalf of the Cambridge Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. I just have to sit down for that. We would like to present you with just a very, very, very small token of our appreciation and let you know you've been a cornerstone of this organization. I mean, literally, you are a cornerstone. Would you like to read it? You want me to read it? Okay. This is Donna Hill, with sincere appreciation from the C C P A A alumni. Your dedication, leadership, guidance, and fellowship will be greatly missed. Thank you for all you have done for us, as well as the citizens of Cambridge. Our community will be left with a hole when you move away, but your new community will be gaining a valuable member. We are so happy for you and wish you and your family all the best.
Okay. Madam Clerk, uh, I believe we have a, something that you'd like to read at this point in time?
This is the city council's resolution recognizing Donna Hill for her years of service to the city of Cambridge. Whereas Donna Hill began her service to the city of Cambridge by being appointed on April the eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, by the Republican Central Committee to fill a vacancy in the council at large seat. She was then elected to serve as council at large on January the first, two thousand and twenty, the seat that she holds today. And whereas Donna was first appointed to the Legislative Committee where she currently serves as chairman, she has also served on the city services committee. And whereas Donna has been a very active member of the Cambridge community, having served as the director of Cambridge Main Street, a member of the Dickens Victorian Village Board, Board of Directors, as well as giving the historical cemetery tours during their opening day, a member of the Guernsey County Visitors and Conventions Bureau, a member of the Republican Central Committee, and a member of First Baptist Church. Donna was a member of the inaugural class of the Cambridge Citizens Police Academy and was instrumental in the development of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, where she also served as their president. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Cambridge, County of Guernsey, and State of Ohio, Cambridge City Council wishes to recognize, congratulate, and extend our thanks to Donna Hill for her years of dedicated and faithful service to the residents of Cambridge, and we extend our very best wishes to her.
Go down there. So, TV came here.
Come on in, Donna.
I want TV to get ya.
Tell me you've been moving all day.
Billy.
Yeah, Donna, um. You've, uh, done a lot to this community. This community's benefited a lot by having you with it. I give you this resolution, uh, regretfully so. Because, yeah, we don't want you to leave, but then again, we understand why you're here, and there couldn't be a better reason, so, there you go. There's a little gift that we put together for you.
Little? Is your you-all packed?
It's a little heavy.
Did you want me to open it now or wait?
Last year's.
No, you tell me.
Open it now.
Huh? Why don't you open the microphone, in case there's somebody else that wants to speak?
Yeah. Anybody else say something to Donna?
Down the line.
Start down at the end.
Oh, hold on, the mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I know you hear me often, all Madonna's are straight up. Our time moved years, was off the charts as far as my childhood growing up. I've always looked up to you, and you've always been a positive influence, anywhere you've ever been. And when we asked you to serve in this capacity, from the Republican side, you were a little bit not sure at first, and then stepped right into it. And all of you, and we're making over. It's just hard, when you believe in a community the way somebody like yourself does. And your family, and I can see your dad and, and mom, it's just, I don't know, it's just, you're doing it for the right thing, and I just couldn't sit here, I don't, I really don't know what to say, and that's saying something for me. I wanna give you a hug, but then I, I get mad when I know you're leaving. Got a great guy here, can't blame him, but I, you know, yes, it happens. It don't happen a lot, but you've got a successful, beautiful family, and you need to be with them. Same time, thanks for the time you put in here for coming back, because you're a shining example to those that may thought about coming back and never did. And you've made a, you, you've got a stamp on a bunch of things, helped us pass and move, Main Street, got them up and rolling. You know, it's always somebody, a little group of this, a little group of that, but you did it. You did it. You didn't just talk about it, you did it. I can tell by the room of people sitting around in here, and there's more out there. Thank you. I'll always remember you. Thank you, always.
Tony?
Well, I met you when you were on Main Street, and dealing with the council, and you did a wonderful job, and you really set the bar, to be honest. And then serving with you on city council, and then, uh, you and Mike became customers of mine at a local business, and, um, and personal friends, which even meant more than that. Uh, it's tough to lose assets like you guys for this town, I mean, every, everything you've done, I mean, it, it's reflective, and we appreciate it, and we're gonna miss you. And, um, safe travels. And we are sincerely happy for you and your family.
Ms. McMillan?
Well, my neighbor. You know, when you live in a small town, and you go to school in a small town, and you graduate from a, your local high school, you have friends that you have through all, all through school, might not be close then, you graduate from high school, some, some of us choose to stay here, some choose to move away, and then they choo, choose to move back. Since you have moved back, you and Michael have been pillars in this community, in my opinion. But you've also been a friend. That I am so glad that our friendship has blossomed, for lack of a better term, over the last several years, since you've been back. It says volumes, for the number of people in this room that are shedding tears, because while we're sad to see you go, and you're gonna leave a little bit of a void in my heart, we're happy for you. We're happy for your family. I'm gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss my neighbor. I hope the new neighbor is just as- And man, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a minority here, after tonight, man, again.
There is that.
There we go. And watch out, fellas, because I'm not sitting back on this. But Donna, I love you, Michael, I love you too, and I appreciate everything that you've done. And I'm gonna miss ya. But we're, we're, we're gonna be here, so come back. And Michael said she'll be back for her reunion, and I said, well, you better be too. Donna and I did graduate high school together, and she's always been at our reunions, and she's gonna come back, and I just wish you guys the best, and thank you so very much for everything you've done. Yeah, thank you. I gotta stop now, okay?
Well, it definitely is bittersweet, Donna. All of us have family. And we know how precious they are to us. For you to get to go and bounce those babies on your knee at Christmas, and be there to welcome the new one that's coming next year, priceless. So as the mayor said, it's definitely for the right reason. That doesn't mean that it still doesn't hurt us. Not much more can be said than what's already been said, your involvement with Main Street was nothing short of amazing, and the thing that resonates so much with me about that is that we were so blessed because we had a great director, but we also had a helpmate. And Main Street was, Main Street was blessed because of the things that Michael did to help you. And, and I know that he was awarded the Volunteer of the Year one year, which was so well-deserved. So we, we're not just losing Donna, we're losing a great team. And, um, Cambridge City Schools bus driver, you know, with, my dad, on his off days at the fire department, drove the bus, and I know how important that role is to those kids. So for both of you, we, you're leaving a big hole in our community, I look at, I'm privileged to be a member of the Citizens Police Academy alumni, and I know what work you did for that group. I know that you and a few others that are in the room, Kim and Anna in particular, and I think Mitch was there at the beginning too, we wouldn't be in association if it weren't for the work that you guys put in. And so for just those things, and, and of course your work here on council is, it just is, and, um, it doesn't, it's not lost on anybody here, the work and effort that you put into ser, serving in that seat. So best wishes to you both, safe travels. We'll look for you on social media, and keep us updated how life is going, and we'll look for you to come in and visit us when you're back for that reunion. Thank you.
Jim?
Donna, it's, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, it's cool, like Kim said, to have a, a lot of us being from the same, you know, high school and growing up here, to, to be involved in the city, and it, it's so hard to get people to be involved today. And you really took the bull by the horns, you're really, really dedicated, and really, if you didn't understand something, you dug into it, you studied it, and you were great to work with, debated a lot of things. A lot of times, not everybody agreed with everything, but, uh, you know, we at the end of the day respected everybody, and everybody's opinion, and we all learned from each other, and you were a big part of that. And that was, I just, uh, can't thank you enough for all that. You know, but the other, I think the more important thing for me is that I just, it was heartfelt, you just wanted to make Cambridge a better place for all of us. And, uh, and I felt that a lot from you. And I just wanna thank you again for your dedication, and I enjoyed working with you, and I wish you all the best.
Sean?
Uh, first and foremost, I would like to, uh, thank Michael for lending us your wife every Monday, and, uh, for all the work that she would do with us, and, and I'm sure she kept you busy too, but, I just wanna say that how much I appreciate, uh, learning from Donna, she's a staple of our community, she has done so many, uh, tremendous things to, to shine the light on Cambridge, and I mean to tell ya, I'm gonna get chipped up here.
You're allowed. Join the club, yeah, right, I have Kleenex.
I'm glad I didn't.
I really respect her opinion on a lot of things, I would ask Donna questions, and she would tell me what she thought, and, uh, and even as today, uh, we had a little discussion in the hallway today, and she still is giving me advice, and I know that I can call her, text her at any time, and, and lean on her for her experiences, and in life and in, you know, community, so I just wanna say, you know, congratulations in getting to be with your family, that's a very special thing. And, uh, I always appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
Mike?
Donna, I just wanna say that I appreciate your, you're a straight shooter. For me, you've always been a straight shooter. If I have a question or a concern, and I go to you, I know I'm gonna get a straight answer from you, I'm not gonna, you're not waffling, not wishy-washy, I appreciate that, I like being told what a person thinks, and you always let me know how you thought, and it helped me, you were the first, other than ones I've known personally, you were the first councilperson that I met, when I joined. And I thought, when I was talking to you on, on the phone, when I thought, I'm gonna get this interview, you know, I'm, I'm a nobody, and I'm gonna get this interview from this councilperson for, for this seat, I was all prepared for this big structured interview and stuff. It was very informal, and I appreciated that. Because you just brought a calmness about a nervous situation, because I didn't know what to expect, but you just brought that, that calmness to me, and I felt very comfortable after we spoke, and anytime I've ever had a conversation with you, it's always been on good terms. You, I could say, we could just play record, or repeat for everything that everybody said about you. I haven't known you that long, but four years is enough to know a good person when you meet one. And I really appreciate all, all that you've done, how you've helped us, the things we've done here, and I wish you guys well in your travels. Family's important, nothing else, family is important. We are a family, and I'm just now getting used to this, getting used to Leonard, he leaves, Steve comes. You're leaving, somebody else, and, and for me, I like consistency, but this, the changing is, I'm having to work with that, but I'll get through that, you'll be missed, but just know, you're, you're going in the wrong direction, there's no place like home.
But she's gonna be in Kansas.[1541.73]